Call for Trustee Clifford. On date of January 7th, 2019, at 6:30 order, please rise and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the light of the eyes of states of America. Consider the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, that really deserves us all.
We do have an excused absence also by Kathy Anstich who called. We told her to stay home because of the flu. Approval of media agenda, number three, please.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hosed. Motion passes. Approval of minutes stated 12/3/2018, 12/11/2019.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December 3rd, 2018, and December 11th, 2018.
My second. Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other questions, discussion, once again? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hosed. Motion passes. Number five, public announcements. Any public announcements at this time? No public announcements? Number six, public comment. Any public comment at this time? Sir?
Is this what I'm supposed to address? I refer to you.
Did your name and address, please, sir?
Yeah, I'm John Sarah of Med Farms of Michigan.
Pull that up if you know.
Okay, of Med Farms of Michigan. And as the board knows, I'm aye with my partner Brendan Dabish made application to the board to operate a grow processing and provisioning center in the township. And I was not granted a permission to do that at the last meeting. We spoke to various members of the board, including yourself and Mr. Kasim, and it was determined there were a couple of things that we did not do properly on our application, that were not to the liking of the board, to one of which was our provisioning center was not situated on the property that was in the zone. I'd like to say that Brendan and I, among all of the applicants, were the absolute only ones in the entire application process that are actually licensed by the state of Michigan to grow, process, and provision marijuana. And we do have a grow and processing facility in the state right now, and are about to open another one. And we are up in Bangor, which is in Bay County. I have letters from both the supervisor of Bangor Township and the county executive of Bay County, who will extol our virtues to the nth degree. We've been operating there in the light of day for almost a year. I sent video of our operations up in Bay County to the board. I believe everybody has seen them. And I'm here today to say that we went at the suggestion of Mr. Kasim to your engineering firm that is well-known to the community here, to redraw our plans. My partner Brendan is on his way. Unfortunately, he's stuck in traffic due to a horrible accident, and is on his way with a presentation that I can't give you right now because he's got it with him. And I'm hoping that if something doesn't work out, I understand that a couple of the applicants might not be moving forward the right way, the people that have been somewhat approved, I mean, or approved, we're here, we want to do this, we want to come forward. You know, we have the financing, we have the land, we have the expertise, we want to do this, we want to be part of the community, and we have the licenses. And you know, the state of Michigan, you worry about how people will perform and who they are. I guarantee you, I have been vetted in ways that I had no understanding of how I would be scrutinized. They went back to 1972, when I unfortunately was incarcerated for three hours, and my father came and got me and warned me, this was the last time he would ever bail me out. So what I'm trying to say is, I'm as clean as a whistle, I'm an open book, we have a proven track record, we have the licenses, we have the money, we have the know-how, and we will do anything that you want us to do. We have, I got a half a million dollars that I blew on 26 mile road, on a building that is not useful to this. We were told that it was in the zone. I bought the My Place BBQ, and it was, we thought it was in the zone. That's why we wanted to put our provisioning center, thought it'd be a great place. Had we known that you wanted campus, we would have put it on a campus. There's nothing I wouldn't have done to satisfy the board. And as far as the money, as far as the ability, we have it. As far as the licenses, we have them. We're the only ones. And that's basically what I have to say. Brendan will be here, we're going to resubmit, and just tell us what we need to do, and if it is possible, we want to be here. That's the whole message, that's all I have to say, is my public comment. Is there any questions you have for me? Shut up and sit down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other public comment at this time? Hearing none. Number seven, public hearing, 2019 Development Black Grant Funds, CDBG.
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing for the Community Development Black Grant Funds at 6:36.
My second. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Deputy Clerk, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Brownlee?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing open. Would you like me?
Hi, so I'm Tracy Hayden, I'm with Turning Point, I'm McComb County. I work for the Community Advocacy Program, but I'm here to represent the shelter program for the CGBG funding. I'm here to request $1,000 for the community black grant money from Lennox Township. We ask for this to assist abused survivors from your community. I know that in the last year that we assisted one resident through shelter services, and we also assisted eight residents in additional program services from your community. And I thought, instead of reading some of our hot out thing, I'd like to tell you what we do when someone comes into shelter for that first day, and the services that they'll get within the first 48 hours. So from this money, women, women and children, males, we take in people all the way up to 18, from 18 as adults, and minors, as young as newborns, from domestic and sexual violence. They will receive counseling services, they receive a case manager within the first 24 hours, to help them work with safety planning, to help working to find affordable housing. They also will receive our children's services, which is pretty amazing. We have a summer camp where the kids get to go to museums, and they get to go out and do things that they probably never experienced before. They work with mothers and children to start the healing process, and to work with resources that are out in the community that will be able to help them solidify safe housing, and safe monies to be able to provide that environment for their children. Without your funding, we would not be able to do the three meals a day that are provided. Women and children come in, we do service males, which are off-site, they receive all the same services, food, counseling services, case management, safety planning. They come in most of the time with nothing, and we provide furniture vouchers for when they move, we provide food and personal needs, clothing, help getting children enrolled in schools. All of the everyday stuff that we need, we're able to provide for them. So I thank you for giving me time in front of you, and for your support through Turning Point, to help support your community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This man.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Pittman, and I am the forensic interviewer at Care House. Care House is the McComb County Child Advocacy Center, with our main office located in Mount Clemens. Our services are focused on child victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, or children who have witnessed a violent act, as well as their non-offending family members. Our goal is to maximize, I'm sorry, to minimize trauma for child victims of abuse, and to help the child victim and the non-offending family member through the investigation and prosecution phases, and support the healing process. Care House is one of 34 accredited child advocacy centers, or CACs, in Michigan, serving over 53 counties, and one of over 800 in the United States. We collaborate with all law enforcement jurisdictions in McComb County, as well as the FBI, Homeland Security, and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, also child protective services, the McComb County Prosecutor's Office, medical and mental health professionals, and other child welfare agencies determined by the case. Over 1 million children in this country suffer from abuse and neglect each year. Child sexual abuse is an epidemic. Most children suffer from the trauma of sexual abuse than from asthma and autism combined. Experts agree that the actual number of victims is difficult to determine, and is probably much higher than what is reported. At Care House, the types of cases we see range from kid-on-kid touching, or other sexual contact, the perpetration of sexual abuse on children by adults, serial sexual abusers, otherwise known as pedophiles, children who suffer repeated, frequent, and sadistic forms of sexual abuse, physical abuse, and torture, and sometimes with the knowledge of a parent who is failing to protect them, also child pornography and sex trafficking. Over 90% of child victims know their abuser. Those who let children look and act just like everyone else. Abusers can be neighbors, friends, coaches, teachers, clergy, parents, or other family members. They can be adults or children, they can be men or women. The children we serve come from every community in McComb County, and are spared the trauma of multiple interviews, and provided with the tools they need to help them heal and move forward. After the forensic interview, Care House also offers follow-up services for child victims and their parents, intervening to promote healing and helping families to cope with the emotional stress and trauma that is caused by not only the acts of abuse, but by the investigative process. Our support services include the following: crisis counselor, parent and child support groups, trauma-focused therapy sessions, child safety assessments, family advocacy, access to forensic medical examinations, referrals to other needed community services. As the designated counsel in McComb County for the Michigan Children's Trust Fund, Care House also offers child abuse prevention information, education and training for professionals, and to the community at large. Families are never charged for the services they receive at Care House, and we provide services to all referred children and their non-offending family members. I am also proud to report that according to our most recent independent financial audit, 86 cents of every dollar that comes to Care House is specifically devoted to serving children and families in our community. After conducting interviews one at a time in one location for 22 years, I am very excited to announce that we have opened a satellite center in Warren. This new victim and family service center brings critical services, including forensic interviews, therapy, and support groups directly to families in the southern part of our county, for whom transportation to access these services has previously been a barrier. Our new satellite office has also freed up space in our schedule of our Mount Clemens location, so that services can be delivered faster to children in the communities for whom that location is more convenient. Since our opening in 1996, we have conducted over 7,000 child forensic interviews, with 39 of those children residing in Lennox Township. In 2017, we provided 605 forensic interviews, four of those children reside in Lennox Township. In 2018, we provided 753 forensic interviews, five of those children reside in Lennox Township. Last year, for 2018, we received $275 in CDBG funding from your community, which helps support services to one family. We depend on support from the community to provide a voice for child victims and a safe place for them to be heard. We are very grateful to have the support of Lennox Township over the years. We respectfully request your consideration for funding this upcoming fiscal year in the amount of $1,200, which will support services for child victims and their families that reside in Lennox Township. For more information about Care House, I do have a few extra pamphlets if anyone needs one. Also, you can visit our website at www.mccarehouse.org, or follow us on Facebook. Thank you so much for hearing me out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? This man? Would you like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Gascoigne?
Good evening, board members. On behalf of the Lennox Township Planning Area, I'd like to request that you consider providing funding for a non-public service funding, not going to compete with the public services, but the bricks and mortar portion of the funding, that we consider utilizing it for spot elimination, like removal, to get rid of structures in the township that are deteriorating, dilapidated, and unsafe.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, board members. On behalf of the Lennox Township Planning Area, I'd like to request that you consider providing funding for a non-public service funding, not going to compete with the public services, but the bricks and mortar portion of the funding, that we consider utilizing it for spot elimination, like removal, to get rid of structures in the township that are deteriorating, dilapidated, and unsafe.
Thank you, sir.
On behalf of Lennox Township Senior Center, requesting some funds for their services for another mystery bunch. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for Community Development Black Grant Funds at 6:48.
My second. Thank you. Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any other questions, discussion? Deputy Clerk, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Brownlee?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Public hearing is closed. Number eight, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public soul requests at or prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under item number nine below. Approval of the consent agenda shall be by a majority roll call vote for those present in voting.
We have orders and bills in the amount of $478,423.2.
Please, number one more time, please.
That includes $307,000 that was prepaid before the holidays.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the approval of the orders and bills amended in the amount of $478,423.2.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Clerk Candell. Any other discussion? Deputy Clerk, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Brownlee?
Aye.
Clifford? Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number nine, no items were removed from the consent agenda. Number 10, there is no unfinished business. Number 11, new business, fiscal year 2018 audit report. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Karen Shapik, I'm from Stuart, Bougainville, and we came down, well, last year now, to do the township's audit. It's about a 50-page report, so I'm going to break that down to a quick few minutes. You have all the reports, the board does, and there's a couple letters attached there as well. The independent auditors' report really is the only piece of this report that is Stuart, Bougainville, and Wipples. You do have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, the best opinion you can have, and what the township strives for. There's also another section, Management Discussion and Analysis, that really gives a narrative of the township and their activities over the past year. And then it moves into the township-wide financial statements, which gives all the assets and liabilities of the township, including the building, and any debt that they have. The traditional way that the township looks at their financial statements, though, is on modified accrual basis of accounting, and I want to talk a little bit just about that. With your general fund, at the end of June 2018, you had assets of a little over $2.2 million, some liabilities of $57,000, deferred inflows of $7,000, with the fund balance at the end of the year of $2,216,138. The activities for the year, revenues came in, just over $1.3 million, expenditures were $1.1 million, and transfers in were $11,000. So the change in the fund balance for the general fund this past year was a positive That is broken out into a couple different categories, some being non-spendable, which are really prepaid, they're assets that you just can't spend again, $51,000. There's an assigned fund balance of $561,000, and the unassigned fund balance was $1.6 million at the end of June. There are a couple other special revenue funds of the township, one being the road fund, which brought in revenues of $167,000 and expenditures of $44,000. There made a change in the fund balance of $123,000. The fire fund brought in just under $550,000 for the year, and total expenditures were $478,000. And then there were some other financing sources, some sale of an asset of $22,500. So the change in their fund balance was to the good of $94,162. Your PTA revenue fund had just under $2.9 million coming in for revenues, expenditures were $1.2 million, and then other financing uses, transfers out, were a little over $1.2 million as well. So the change in their fund balance was to the good $445,211. And then there's a liquor law enforcement fund, which saw a change in fund balance of $643, and then a monitoring fee fund that saw a change of $156. There is one debt service fund that the township has, which saw a change in fund balance of $630, leaving the fund balance of $31,505 for the Chapter 23. Your enterprise fund, which is your water supply and sewage disposal system fund, saw operating revenues this year of $1.8 million, operating expenses, excluding depreciation, was just over $1 million. However, depreciation expense was $961,000 this year. So there was an operating loss in your water and sewer fund of $172,000 this year. There were some transfers in of $1.2 million, and then some non-operating expenses of $840,000. So the change in your net position with your enterprise fund was to the positive $212,316. There was some net working capital in your, actually a little bit of a decrease in your net working capital, but it was positive $320,000 at the end of June. There are a couple other reports that I left in your packets. There's an independent auditors' report on internal control, and then an auto-communication letter that we had gone over when we were down for a draft meeting. There's a couple graphs in the presentation packet that I had passed out, just giving a breakdown of your general revenues and expenditures by function. It really is just a pie graph kind of splitting out. This year, your intergovernmental revenues were 32% of your total revenue, and your general fund last year was about 42%. So there was just a change this past year in the breakdown of your general fund revenues, with some new revenues coming in during the year. And the next page is the same, except for your expenditures. So last year with your general fund, about 84% came in for general, or was spent for general government expenditures, which was the same as the year prior. The last page there, in that packet, there's a bar graph, your total fund balance for your general fund, and it has climbed in the past couple years, however, it has gone down really kind of since a few years before this. So I really encourage you guys building that up, it's a lot of hard work, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be very happy to answer. I know it's a big report, so.
Any questions, Karen?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I will make a motion to receive and file fiscal year 2018 audit report as presented.
Motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hosed. Motion passes. Letter B, 2019 Community Development Black Grant Fund, CDBG allocation. We have two types of allocation, we have brick and mortar and programming. For a program OEA, of total allocation of 1,856, I believe, correct?
For services, correct.
For services.
Two thousand and sixty-seven for brick and mortar. I would like to make a motion to allocate the CDPG funds in the amount of, uh, to the Lennox Township Senior Center, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, to Carehouse, three-hundred-and-ten dollars, to Helping Hands Gifts, three-hundred-and-ten dollars, Interfaith Volunteer Caregivers, eighty-eight dollars, McComb County Warming Center, three-hundred-and-ten dollars, and Turning Point in the amount of three-hundred-and-ten dollars. I would also, um, motion that we allocate the ten thousand and sixty-seven dollars in brick and mortar funds to Light and Demolition.
My second.
I have a motion by clerk Kinnell, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk, please.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Crumpley?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Letter C, Annual Firefighter Fiscal Request. Chief?
Evening, everyone.
Evening, sir.
I provided everybody a letter last week, as well as the annual quote from our fiscal provider, the company is BioCare. And this is something, now this'll be our third year, it's an NFPA requirement, and what I can say that came out of last year real quick is that, excuse me, one of our employees, um, was diagnosed with a very serious illness, and, uh, it was found during this physical, and if it wasn't found, he probably wouldn't be here today. So that's how important it is for us to make sure that our people that are working for us, working for the community, are provided these physicals. So, uh, in a nutshell, I budgeted twelve thousand dollars for this project, and it came in at ten thousand, two-hundred. So unless there are any questions, I request the, um, motion by the board to approve us to move forward on this.
Like you said, you budget this, didn't you?
Absolutely. Every year.
I don't have any problem. I motion to approve the expenditure of ten thousand, two-hundred dollars for firefighter physicals as requested. Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions? Clerk, roll call, please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Crumpley?
Aye.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. One last, real quick. Uh, included with my packet is the year-end totals, and we were slightly down for the first time in quite a while. Last year, we had six-hundred-and-thirty runs, this year, we have six-oh-three, so we're down twenty-seven runs, so I don't know how that compares with Jeff, but, um, slight decrease, which is good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter D, Richmond Lennox EMS Promissory Note and Security Agreement. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, supervisor members of the board. Um, as discussed in our annual budget and business plan for the EMS, the EMS has intention to purchase a new ambulance this year, uh, through a company called AED, or American Emergency Vehicles, out of North Carolina. Uh, as the township has done in years past, the ambulance authority respectfully requests the township enter into a security agreement, promissory note, uh, payable by the ambulance authority in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the new vehicle. These vehicles aren't getting any, any cheaper. This time, uh, this purchase will be in addition to our fleet, it will not be a replacement, which has been the case in the past. Part of the need for the addition, frankly, is just an ever-increasing call volume. Uh, we're really a call-volume dependent, and, uh, we've seen a, an increase, uh, throughout our surface area over the last few years. So we'll be going from six to seven ambulances available in the community, uh, with the purchase of this vehicle. The EMS will, uh, the EMS will be paying off a note, the promissory note that we have on a current vehicle over the next thirty days. This payoff will be six months in advance of the original payoff date, which was August of 2019.
Good job.
Uh, the, uh, the new note is the same as prior, uh, we use the same agreement, uh, we made no material changes in that to avoid any, uh, you know, issues with regards to legal counsel or the attorneys. The, uh, the note indicates that the vehicle will be paid off with or in advance of seventy-two months. Um, and basically what this does with the community is it is really just simply a loan agreement that allows us to oppose to, uh, taking a loan through a commercial bank, where the commercial bank gains the interest rate from, uh, from the ambulance authority for the purchase of this vehicle. The township actually, um, receives the interest, uh, payment on this, and in years past, that's worked out both well for the EMS and the township. Uh, we pay a, a higher interest rate than what the township gets on any investment funds they can put into CDs or other, uh, obligations that you can, uh, put, uh, taxpayer money into, and we actually get a lower interest rate than we can get from the local bank. So it's really just a win-win situation for both the community and for the ambulance authority to borrow the money through the township versus, uh, versus, uh, borrowing it commercially. So with that, the agreements are in front of you. Again, there is, uh, one that is called a security agreement, and then the other, it's actually the promissory note, and, uh, the EMS would respectfully request that the board approve both of those this evening.
No question.
Sure.
You said two-hundred-and-twenty-five.
I did, and it's actually two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand in the note. The original number actually was two-twenty-five, and I put that in my original note tonight, and I looked through here real quickly, and the actual note amount that you have in front of you is two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. We did make some, um, actually reductions, uh, in things that we thought we might have initially liked on the truck, and we actually backed off on those, some of those to bring the price down a little bit, so the price is two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, this has worked very well on the board.
I would like to make a motion that we enter into an agreement with Richmond Lennox Ambulance Authority for new equipment in the amount of two-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars, also authorizing the township supervisor and clerk to sign both the promissory note and the security agreement.
My second.
Thank you. Motion by clerk Kinnell, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Crumpley?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just one quick reminder, if I could, uh, the EMS has its winter blood drive this Thursday. Uh, it is from nine AM to seven PM. The winter drive, we do up at the Richmond Township Hall, the, the summer drive, we actually do here at Lennox Township, uh, but, uh, the, uh, it will be at the Richmond Township Hall, located at three, four, nine, and school section road. And, uh, blood supplies are kind of a critical level right now, so anybody that can donate, uh, would appreciate them coming out on Thursday, uh, to see us. Thank you so very much.
Mr. White, uh, everything's good with what happened earlier?
Yes, yes, we did.
No injuries whatsoever?
No injuries whatsoever. We did have one of our, uh, small buses that we operate through our partnership with Smart, uh, involved in an accident today at, uh, Carriage Way in Grashit, just north of, uh, Twenty-three Mile Road, Grashit Avenue. While there was damage to our vehicle, the vehicle, uh, that was struck, there were, uh, no injuries. There was one driver, one rider on the bus, and, uh, a couple of occupants in the vehicle that was struck, and, and everybody's doing just fine. Uh, the vehicle's already been taken down to Smart for repairs.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
We're gonna sign for you right now, Mr. White.
Thank you.
I appreciate those chefs, those texts, Jeff, are nice. Well, I, believe it or not, I do get questions on that sometimes where I work, you know, people go by there and they, they see this stuff like that, and they'll ask me, what happened? Uh, it's nice to know.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic on there, so, so, a lot of people saw it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Great job. All right. Letter E, Building Department Hire Request. This was due to a posting, uh, for request to hire, also, um, we, kind of a dual role person in the building department, and myself, Building Department Manager, Amy Flood, um, Kathy Hahnold, and Jeanette, who we interviewed, uh, this individual, we feel she's a great candidate, she does live in a township, and, uh, we feel is very qualified, uh, for this position. I'd like to hire her at this time.
This is ten dollars an hour and twenty-two hours a week.
Twenty-four hours a week, unbelievable.
Well, I think we put down three days, twenty-two and a half hours a week to be evaluated in sixty to ninety days.
Yeah.
Depending on what the, um, workload becomes once she gets trained.
That's fine, by me.
So I will make a motion that we hire Don Tasto as the Building Department Assistant at the pay rate of ten dollars an hour for three days or twenty-two and a half hours a week, noting that the week, work schedule will be, will be reevaluated in sixty to ninety days to determine if an adjustment needs to be made.
My second.
Motion by clerk Kinnell, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. You will contact her tomorrow and let her know. Letter F, McComb Annual Cultural Purchase of Development Rights, PDR Committee Request.
I received a letter from the McComb PDR Committee requesting, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to cover expenditures. This is something that we have done, um, as far back as I can see in, in accounts payable. I've looked at it, it's, it's a continual thing we, um, the price hasn't gone up, they're just requesting two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenditures of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to McComb PDR Committee for 2019.
My second. Who's second, I don't know?
Second.
By trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Michigan Township MTA Conference Request, R G.
This year, the MTA conference is in Grand Rapids, April first through the nineteenth. Um, geez, sorry, my phone just decided to go. The cost is three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars per attendee, and we are requesting to have, um, all five members of the board, plus Mr. Cass and our planner, attend. So I am seeking approval of two-thousand-and-ninety-four dollars for the cost of the MTA, um, uh, conference itself. We do not know at this point what the, um,
Lodging.
lodging will be because it's not opened up yet, so I'm just looking for the two-thousand, the approval of two-thousand-and-ninety-four dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenditures of two-thousand dollars, two-thousand-and-ninety-four dollars for Lennox Township Board and Lennox Township Planner, Steve Casson, to attend the 2019 MTA conferences in Grand Rapids, Michigan, April first through the fourth of 2019.
And that money just goes to MTA, right? That's, that's, like you say, it's not hotel, nothing?
That's correct. It's just the registration.
My second. Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Number H, Computer Maintenance Request.
Okay, this next group is, um, after meeting with our computer people and talking and discussing the things that we'd like to accomplish in the next year or so, as far as, um, getting us onto AT&T and being able to scan. I have three, actually, three, um, expenditures that I need approval on. One would be five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for a software update for the backup servers. Uh, the second is, um, to approve an expenditure of eight-thousand-five-hundred for one-hundred hours of tech time with high-tech system services. And then the last item is in the amount of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and eleven cents, and that's to replace and upgrade our da- bank of switches to expand our number of hookups. That one is really important at this time because we are out of hookups downstairs in the basement, so the new lady that we just hired today won't have a computer unless we get this new bank of switches in.
Are you asking for approval of all three right now?
Yes, I am.
I make a motion to approve the expenditure of five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars for the software update for Lennox, for the Lennox Township backup servers. Also, make a motion to approve the expenditures of eight-thousand-five-hundred for a hundred hours of tech time with high-tech system services. And also to make a motion to approve the expenditures of two-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and eleven cents to replace and upgrade the bank of switches to expand the number of hookups.
My second. Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. Any more questions or discussion? Clerk, please.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Crumpley?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Letter I, Order of New Continued Education Request.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the Board of Review members and the Recording Secretary's attendance at the MISD 2019 Board of Review Training at a cost of fifteen dollars per member, February nineteenth, 2019, from eight AM to five PM.
This is something they go to every year, anyway, isn't it?
Yes, and it's a lot, um, less expensive sending them there than through the MTA training.
Oh, that's, I know that, and, uh, or through the time of service, and then, which is no longer there, but, yeah, I was experienced at it. I make a motion that we approve the Board of Review members and Recording Secretary's attendance at the MISD for the 2019 Board of Review Training at a cost of fifteen dollars per member on February nineteenth, 2019, from eight to five PM. Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Letter J, Order of Trustees Meeting Date Modification.
Okay, it's not really a date modification, more of a time modification. Our April Board of, uh, Trustees Meeting is on April first, which is the first day of MTA. So, in order to get that meeting in, we are requesting that we set that meeting for nine o'clock AM on April first, so that the board members have time to travel afterwards.
I make a motion to reschedule the April first, 2019 Board Meeting to nine AM on April first, due to the fact that the board members will be at the MTA. In support?
Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by clerk Kinnell. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes. Thank you. Number twelve, Public Comment. Any public comment this time? No public comment.
Are you, is there one more public comment?
Yeah, right now.
Any public comment?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year. Uh, my name is Brandon Davish. This one, sorry. My name is Brandon Davish. I had applied, um, the last year for a medical marijuana license in the township. We weren't denied, we weren't approved, but I'm requesting that the township possibly consider an opportunity for an additional license on grounds being that we are state-licensed. We were one of the only applicants that applied that actually had a state license, and we're still looking to do business in the township. And I'd like to possibly set up a, um, uh, special meeting to go over some revised drawings that I did. Thank you.
Yes, we'd like to know, is that possible? I mean?
This is, this is a public comment.
Oh, okay.
Second, sir, it's time to question and answer.
Okay. That was our comment at the beginning and at the end again.
Okay, thank you, sir. But I would, what I would tell you, those suggestions, call our, our planner, and, uh, both of them. Thank you. Number thirteen, Close Session. Close Session A for purposes of discussing confidential privileged attorney-client correspondence, as well as litigation updates, for the township attorney. Mr. Paul Adams.
I make a motion that we retire to close sessions on the eighteenth AM to discuss confidential confidential information with the township attorney.
Motion by clerk Kinnell, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Kinnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Crumpley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Close Session, I can't really see that, the clerk, is that seven-twenty? Seven-twenty. 7:20.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 7:34. I'd like to make a motion to justify the township attorney to authorize the township planner and supervisor in discretion to take ordinance violations to circuit law.
My second.
Motion by Clerk Kennell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk, please.
Kennell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Crumpley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion that we allow the township to have expenditure of $30,000 for earnest money deposit.
My second.
Motion by Clerk Kennell, supported by Trustee Gurley. Any other questions or legislation? Court, please.
Kennell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at earnest money deposit.
My second.
Motion by Trustee Gurley, supported by Clerk Kennell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any other questions? Thank you.